Everybody ready? There we go. Good evening, there we go. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now convening the regular meeting. Would you join me in standing for a silent invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we have a couple of proclamations here tonight. I would like to, I know that one individual was present for the Earth Day proclamation, but I'd like to read the other one first because there's some, they're not present for that. I'd like to read, this is the proclaiming April 16 through the 23rd, 2023, as days of remembrance for victims of the Holocaust. The history of the Holocaust provides the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments and their efforts to overcome prejudice through education and reflection. We should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. The city of Morgan Hill prides itself on being an inclusive city with an eye to social justice. The city of Morgan Hill condemns any manifestation of religious intolerance, incitement, harassment, or violence against persons based on ethnic origin or religious belief. The city council hereby pledges to firmly commit ourselves to say never again and to work to promote human dignity by confronting intolerance and hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Our next proclamation, this is for the day, and Tanya Kurwethers will receive this. All right, everyone. Okay, so proclaiming the day of April 22nd through, 2023 is Earth Day. Environmental health of the planet continues to be threatened by global climate change, tropical deforestation, ocean pollution, and toxic waste requiring action by everyone. Enhancing and improving our green economy will require cooperation across all sectors of society, with all caretakers of the planet, and have an obligation to address climate change and preserve the earth's beauty as well as its resources. This obligation extends not only to take, not only to today's caretakers, but also to future generations who will inherit our planet. The city of Morgan Hill is committed to building on successes we have achieved thus far and looks to support this issue of environmental protection by raising local awareness. And so we'd like to present this proclamation to you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, just, I'm very happy to be serving an organization that is making great strides in our local and regional and state environment, so thank you very much.
Now we are getting to presentations and we have the Youth Action Council with us this evening. They have a presentation to make. We'll have them come forward.
All right, everyone can hear me? Sure can, go ahead. Let's get started. So hello, Mayor Turner, our council members, city manager, city attorney, our team members, and our community members. We're looking forward to presenting to you this evening. And but before we get to our developmental asset, which is service to others, which we kind of embody here at Yak, we're going to start with some introductions. And so first off is me, so I'm Harrison. I'm a Live Oak senior, and this is my second year in Yak as an active member.
Hi, everyone, I'm Doris. I'm in 10th grade at GECA. This is my first year in Yak, and I'm Waves Secretary.
Hi, my name is Paris. I'm a senior Sabato. This is my fourth and last year in Yak sadly, and I'm the co-development loss ambassador. I'm filling in today for sick member.
Now, if the introduction's done, we'll get more into the developmental asset, which is developmental asset number nine, service to others, which is young person serves in the community one hour or more per week. Which you can imagine Yak kind of embodies, like I said before, where you all put our time forward to volunteer in our own communities. And so we're looking forward to presenting this one to you guys today. And going a bit more into that is our complimentary asset for today. Complimentary asset number 33, interpersonal competence, which is young person has empathy, sensitivity, and friendship skills. So you could imagine, again, some of these kind of go hand in hand. You need to have the empathy and the sensitivity to really assist the people that you're helping and to really see that you're making, making the place just a little better. And then on top of that, being able to have the skills of a communicator and being able to establish friendships and bonds that go beyond just you volunteering.
Yeah, I think community service is a great way to build those skills. So many of you may already know this, but a lot of high schools make it a graduation requirement to have a certain number of community service hours, oh, sorry, by the time you graduate. And this is a really good motivator for some high school students to sign up for a community events, but at the same time, it kind of changes their perspectives a little bit. So many of them might start to see it as a chore or something that they're forced to do, rather than something they do out of their personal desire to help the community. One of my earliest experiences volunteering was as a math tutor. And it made me really proud every time that I saw them improving in their math skills and then also becoming more confident as a result. A little more recently, I went to Valley Pines, the assisted living center in Morgan Hill, to play a couple of piano pieces. And while I enjoyed the performance aspect a lot, what made me really want to go back again was getting to talk to the seniors afterwards. So these two experiences have taught me a couple of lessons. The first is that everyone has something unique to contribute, whether that be their time or a talent. And the second thing is that community service is a great way to interact with some groups of people that you might not normally interact with, which is why I think community service is much more than just an obligation, and it's actually a privilege.
Thank you, Doris. And kind of to add on a little bit more into what she was talking about, and in contrast, thanks, Paris, I would have forgotten that one. I would like to, my high school actually doesn't require community service anymore to graduate. So it's no longer a broad requirement, but it is, and it suggests that you do it for your civics. Regrettably, this has led to some kids not putting their time forward to volunteer. And while it is regretful and sad, we should also kind of take a step back and realize the mindset behind paying in volunteering for you and the people around you. And I kind of thought, when I was looking at this, it kind of embodied in this sentence that I found, which is, being of service means you've chosen to engage with our expectation of reciprocation. Basically, you're doing it for you, and you're not doing it because you're trying to impress anybody or it looks good for that college resume or any monetary value or any of that or whatever kind. You're doing it because you are proud to put your time forward and you feel positively impacted by the people that you're helping make this community a better place. Do it for you.
Like I said previously, I was filling in, so I don't have a slide, but similarly to what Harrison was saying, our school doesn't require volunteering hours either, but we have something called a silver quota award in which if you put in 50 hours of community service, you want to see, I believe, a tassel on your graduation cap. And not many students go and do this opportunity, but it is really important for the students that do. They're putting their time into the community, and through that, they're learning lessons themselves as well as helping in the community and making, putting smiles on other people's faces. And through Yak, for example, I've done balloon making or face painting, and I see how happy it makes me as well as the little children and their parents. And these past few years, I've also helped to make the memos, and I've learned how to like guide my members, guide my peers, and learn to meet deadlines, mentor them, and create all these beautiful memos that you guys are reading every month. And I'm very proud of doing that, and it's just through community service and Yak that I've been able to do this. And I feel that in general, through community service, it has helped to better me as well as better the community.
Yeah, I think something that we've all talked a little bit about today is the intrinsic value of community service, which is why we chose our quote for this month, which is, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And this quote is by Winston Churchill. And what it means is that every small act of community service, it eventually adds up to become a lifestyle of community service. And as a member of the community, I want to thank all of you for the work that you do because it really makes an impact in Morgan Hill. This is my first time presenting to you all today, and I really enjoyed it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, you've all done a great job, and thank you for your contribution to our community as well. Appreciate you being here, thank you. City Council reports, I have the responsibility of doing an update on some of my outside activities. I was recently at a League of Cities conference where actually council member Martinez Beltran also attended. This conference provided a number of different workshops on various topics such as homeless. Homeless was a long discussion, full day, but they also offered other topics as well, SROs being one of them and various topics. So informative and a lot of good opportunity there. With Laffco, sat on Laffco, the former member of South County, Susan Wilson is retiring, and they appointed somebody new to fill her seat. It was a short meeting because the application that was being presented by Gilroy was pulled, and so that will be coming forward again in May. We attended the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce Legislative Summit last Friday at Old City Hall in downtown Gilroy, and we presented information about what's happening here in Gilroy. We also had that as an opportunity to sit and meet with Senator John Laird and talk with him about some of the issues that are important to us, especially around transportation and around water issues. One of the things we're talking a lot about is recycled water and the impact that has and the, and the the need that we have for recycled water in our community is really something that we need to be thinking about as we go forward. While I was in Sacramento at the League of Cities Conference, I also had an opportunity to meet with Assembly Member Pellorin and talk with her about, again, about water issues, about AB 3005. That was a piece of legislation that was introduced by Robert Rivas back in 2020. And I've asked her and others to bring that forward or a similar bill like it in order to expedite critical water projects, so we don't see a delay in time and a waste of money. That was my report. I'd like to, city manager report, Christina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here. And the first announcement I have is related to our economic mobility grant. And so under the leadership of Assistant City Manager for Development Services Edith Ramirez, I'm happy to announce that we were selected as one of 10 cities in the nation and the only city in California to join the ICMA Economic Mobility Cohort to advance programs that support economic prosperity in our community. And so we'll look specifically to connect people to jobs and housing resources. And so we'll receive technical assistance in addition to a $30,000 implementation grant. And with that, I now want to do what we always enjoy doing, which is sharing with the council and the community our new teammates and teammates that have been promoted. And so we are going to go back to our, our former tradition pre-COVID of having our teammates that are with us tonight. As I go through and present your name and your bio, please come to the front. Maybe Michael, you can join us first up at the front so they know where to go. And so I will start with Ivan Carmona Torres. He joined our team as our deputy city clerk. He has eight years' experience with government municipal services, serving roles as a permit technician and assistant planner with the county of Santa Clara. Recently, he was an associate planner for the Community Development Department with the city of Watsonville. He has a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from Cal Poly. And when he's not serving as a municipal employee, he enjoys serving his community, serving on two local boards. He's the vice president of the Baharo Valley Little League and the treasurer of his daughter's folk lyrical group. He also enjoys coaching his sons in Little League baseball. Please join me in welcoming Ivan. Stay up there, and we'll now introduce Nicole Wong. She joined our team as our human resources technician. She's coming to us with three years' experience as a human resources specialist with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority. She has over 20 years of management and administrative experience. During her time off, she enjoys traveling or making travel plans as she enjoys learning and adapting to new cultures, finding commonalities between people and trying new foods. She also loves spending quality time with family and friends, is always up for a movie marathon. And next, we have Chris Scroggins, and he joined us as a Recreation Services Coordinator, where he'll be supporting the Centennial Recreation Center membership accounts as well as support to our various recreation business functions. He worked for the city of Palo Alto for more than 14 years in various roles, including payroll, accounting, as well as HR. As an accounting specialist, he managed the city's parking permit program, which involved extensive customer service for 5,000 business and resident accounts. He's excited to leverage his skills to support the CRC mission of connecting our community to health and wellness. He's a sports fanatic and enjoys watching Giants, Warriors, Niners, and Sharks. He enjoys biking, hiking, golf, and photography. Please join me in welcoming Chris. And next, creation, we have Ashley Bill. She's joining us as a Recreation Services Coordinator at the CRC, where she'll be responsible for the welcome desk operations as well as overseeing building coordinators. She'll also be managing CRC room rentals, picnic, and field rentals. She has a bachelor's degree in creative arts from San Jose State and began her recreation career in 2012 with the South Valley Family YMCA. In 2015, she was hired by the city of Mountain View as a recreation coordinator before being promoted in 2017 as a recreation, senior recreation coordinator. While she and her husband aren't chasing after their three-year-old son, they enjoy time together celebrating all holidays, trips to Disneyland, cheering on the Niners, the San Jose Sharks, and the St. Louis Cardinals. And next, we have Jose Rios, who's joining our team as a maintenance services coordinator at our courtyard. He comes to us from Cal State East Bay, where he oversaw all facilities, maintenance, and renovation workflows, related to work order processing, prioritization, planning, and scheduling. During his off time, he usually spends quality time with his wife and two daughters. Relaxing activities for him usually include being outdoors, kayaking, hiking, or fishing. He plays basketball in the local rec league and enjoys watching NBA games. He enjoys cooking, whether it's in his kitchen or outside grilling on his Weber. Please join me in welcoming Jose. We have Matthew Gallagher, who joins us as a police officer. Before joining our department, he worked almost five years with the Los Batos Police Department as an officer after graduating from the academy in 2018. During his time off, he enjoys fishing, motorcycle riding, and spending time with his wife and dogs. Next, we have Brenda Moreno. She joins our team as a public safety dispatcher. Brenda has held the position of agent office manager at various insurance companies. In these positions, she was responsible for a multitude of tasks that required her attention to shift quickly. She received her translation interpreting certificate from Evergreen and has used that as an interpreter for the Santa Clara Unified School District. In her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her family. She has four young ones at home and feels it's important to nurture them and experience the world through their eyes. She enjoys taking her kids to local playgrounds, parks, beaches, and rodeos. She enjoys cooking, even though she says she isn't an expert chef, and her specialty is Mexican food. Her family enjoys hosting family and friend gatherings where they can share all the delicious foods. She is super excited to be joining the team. Please welcome Brenda. And next, we have Stormy Gissel. She's joining us as a public safety dispatcher. She served in the United States Air Force for six years. And while enlisted, she completed her bachelor's degree from Thomas Edison State College in Psychology. During the last year of her deployment contract, Stormy served as an air traffic controller. And then she'd find a position with the Morgan Hill Unified School District as a transportation dispatcher before moving on to the city of San Jose, their police department, where she held the position of public safety radio dispatcher for six years. During her off time, she enjoys spending time with her children, her 15-year-old daughter, her twin 10-year-old sons, and their dog Luna. She also enjoys reading or going for a run. Please join me in welcoming Stormy, as well as thanking her for her military service. And next, we have Steven Sheldon, who joins us as a community service officer. He worked for the San Mateo County Probations Department for 25 years prior to retirement. He was hired as a part-time teammate with Morgan Hill in 2021, and he worked with the South County Restorative Justice Youth Diversion Program. On his time off, he enjoys visiting the local wineries with his wife and friends, listening to live music, and having others to their house and just relaxing. Additionally, his wife and daughters keep him busy. However, when he does find time, he also enjoys shooting sport plays along with providing lessons. Thank you to all of our new teammates and who will move on to promotions, thank you. We do have four new promotions that we're going to share with you. And so we have Mario Peraz, who's been with the city of Morgan Hill since December of 1996. He previously held the position of utility supervisor and was promoted to utilities operation manager in February of this year. We have Richard Wake, who has been with the city since January of 2007. He previously held the position of senior utility worker and was promoted to utility supervisor in March. And next, we have Ozzy Esquivel, who's been with the city since July of 2001. He previously held the position of utility worker two and was promoted to senior utility worker in April. And then lastly, we have Frank Alvarez, who's been with us since August of 2007. He previously held the position of maintenance worker two and was promoted to facilities maintenance specialist in March of 2023. And now, of course, I'd like to thank Michael Horda and his small but mighty HR team for the great recruitment efforts. Thank you, Michael. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Outstanding, thank you, Christina. And now for our city manager's report, Mr. Larkin. I'm sorry, city attorney's report, yeah. We just had the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the start of the regular session, the council met and closed session on two items. One was for the conference with the police chief for a threat to public services or facilities. There was a conference with labor negotiators. There was no reportable action from either item.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Larkin. My colleagues have any reports? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to really double down and congratulate Edith and her team on the economic mobility grant. That is not a small feat, and we were one of 10 cities only who got that in the nation. I mean, it's incredible. I know you take the heat, I want you to also take the praise. Number two, I wanted to ask if we could adjourn in honor of Shirley LaCicero, who we all know has done so much to this community. And every time I go to Magical Park with my girls, I think about her, continue to think about her, and I hope we can adjourn in honor of her tonight in her passing. And finally, with the Bike Silicon Valley organization, I know that they are having Bike Month next month, and they've asked if I will share, if we could put out in 411, make sure that we do a friendly competition with our other cities to get everybody to sign up and pledge to bike on the 18th and 19th, or maybe it's 19th and 20th of May, but I'll ask if that can go out in 411. And I know we can win this proportionally.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. Any other reports? Please, councilmember Borzioli.
Thank you, Mayor. I was fortunate enough this, last, last week to go to the Legislative Summit in Gilroy, hosted by the Gilroy Chamber, where actually my colleagues, some of my colleagues were there, and we had the opportunity for, to listen to John Laird and Congresswoman Laffren and Dale Pellorin. Really impressed me very much, but what impressed me is, you know, over the last couple of years, we've been hammering these legislators about Highway 101 and the expansion of Highway 101. And it appears that they really got that message. All three of them spoke on this subject, that they heard us loud and clear with relative to transportation in the South Bay. So I just wanted to mention that the message is getting to them, and we're working hard to keep that in the forefront of what we need in the South Bay relative to transportation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. And now for public comment, the opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is not on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item. Or that is, I'm sorry, that if you're wanting to make a comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. All the comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Your comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Does big allow, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments on items not on tonight's agenda?
No, Mayor, not this evening.
Very good, thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted?
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
That's a member, Martinez Beltran, motioned, seconded by councilmember Spring. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? None? That motion passes 5-0. Now for the consent calendar, if no council member wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar, we'll go to the public. Very good, is there anyone in the public who would like to?
Yes, Mayor, I have items seven and eight.
Items seven and eight, okay. Very good. We will then vote on the balance of the items in the consent calendar. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve, my encounter.
Motion by councilmember Martinez Beltran, seconded by councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Very good. Item number seven.
Joe Baranowski? Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder. I did not, so thank you for putting that out.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me just make this a little bigger. And then I'll just, let me know when you want me to move it forward. Or do you want to start on the other one?
This is fine.
Okay. Is the red light on?
Oh, there it is. Hello. Good evening, my name is Joe Baranowski. I've been a Morgan Hill resident for about 22 years. Senate Bill 423, that the council will vote to formally oppose as part of agenda item seven, extends the law known as SB 35 that was first passed in 2017, that makes it difficult for cities to regulate multifamily housing projects when they're not meeting their so-called RENA allocations mandated by the state. There are legitimate reasons to consider opposing this extension. When you need to fix something that's not working and you have limited resources, it is useful to consider what the root causes in priority order really are. I think some residents have been led to believe that SB 423, along with a number of other housing laws passed at the state level over the past few years, especially SB 330 and SB 35, which during the 2022 campaign were glumped together under the loss of local control banner. Our leading reason-
Baranowski, I'm going to stop you real quick. We're going to, we're going to stop the timer on that. I see it, I'm seeing it showing six minutes. What are the reason for that?
As Joe, as Joe mentioned when he walked up in his email, Robert ceded his time to him. So we have a policy that says up to two people can cede their time with the mayor's approval.
I did not approve that. So we're going to give you four and a half minutes, not six minutes. And so you can finish your time, but that wasn't clear. And if you want to start over, I'll let you start over, but it's four and a half minutes, not six minutes tonight. Could you go? Go ahead.
So we're just making arbitrary?
No, no, the policy actually says may allow.
Right, right, okay. Especially when you don't like this being said. But anyways, so as I was saying, the pointing the finger at Sacramento's root cause is what is happening here is, is, I believe, being a narrative being used to hide that the local decision-making process has been broken and has been broken for a long time. And this is shown beyond any level of description I can come up with by the hypocrisy and the proposed resolution that the city's concerned that this would double down and force cities to approve certain housing projects without opportunities for environmental review impacts or public input. This chart shows that during the eight-year cycle from 2015 to 2023, the state allocated 928 units to be built. The city approved nearly three and a half times that many units. Now, between 2023 and 2031, the allocation is 1,037 units. And as the chart shows, there already is a pipeline that exceeds the mandated number- And as the chart shows, there already is a pipeline that exceeds the mandated numbers by 75%. And for whatever reason, as I understand it, this 782 surplus does not include more than 818 units of New Horizons and Cochrane Commons Place 2, which was already approved, we'll add. So here we are, not even half a year into its eight-year process, and we're far beyond anything the state is forcing us to do. We're going to blow away the three and a half times allocations. Clearly, the state's not the only problem. Now, as you may have already seen, the answer to this is that I just don't understand. Even if the state doesn't mandate building beyond RENA numbers, the property owners still have rights, and the city can't just deny because they want to. And of course, yeah, environmental review is a top priority. Let's take a look at the pipeline that includes Butterfield Village Apartments, 398 units at the corner of Butterfield and Cochrane. Those apartments are being built on land that was zoned industrial. As a group of some of the largest employers in Morgan Hill, represented by the CTO, then Tencati, now Torrey, said in 2017 in a public comment, "The reason was that the developer was allowed to convert that industrial land to residential because they used their, quote, 'marketing muscle and political power' to bypass approved procedures." "Sloping our infrastructure on the remaining industrial land was supposed to be built out to allow local businesses or new high-tech businesses to build the suit. Instead, the land was sold, and we got Butterfield Five warehouses, 120 units at Luthian Commons, now known as Redwood, 498 units at Cochrane Commons, and just a few weeks ago, the 49 units at Gates are all being built on land that was never intended for residential use." I doubt that those units are the only ones, because the list is long. And yes, the process is being abused. There was never any fiscal impact analysis as required by our general plan. This is, my time was cut short. Let me just summarize. To the residents, I just want to make you aware that, yes, the state has impacted Morgan Hill and other cities to much larger demand. But if you really want to know what's happening in Morgan Hill, and you're beginning to feel, see and feel the impacts of the out of, out of control development, just look back to those leading businesses in 2017. The reason is because we have a decision-making process that is biased and broken. It's not based on independent public interest. It's make, based on just make it up, whatever is necessary to say to influence the decision-making process. And that is the root cause of what's happening in Morgan Hill. I'd just stop pointing our finger at Sacramento and look right here and across the street at the tiny building at Peak Avenue to fix the problems in Morgan Hill. Thank you.
Councilmembers, before we get into questions, I do, I would like to, I know we received an email today. I think it had several inaccuracies that I would like the city manager to address. Are you, do you have that up and can address those?
Certainly. So there were six different statements in the email regarding our processes as it primarily relates to CEQA and environmental review. So I'll just go through them one by one. So the first statement was that we approved, council approved a 410,000-square-foot Butterfield Five project based on a 20-year-old traffic impact study. So that's what was written in public comment. And here's our response. An EIR was approved by the city on March 18, 1981, in the planned unit development. In addition, a subsequent initial study was prepared, and a mitigated net negative declaration or an MND was adopted by the city, allowing an amendment to the PUD on April 5 of 2000. Consistent with CEQA guidelines, the development agreement provides this, that the city shall not undertake additional environmental review under CEQA unless required to do so by CEQA. CEQA Guidelines Section 15183 mandate that projects which are consistent with the development density established by existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policies for which an EIR was certified shall not require additional environmental review, except as might be necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the project or its site. The project is located within the Morgan Hill Ranch Park PUD, planned unit development, and is consistent with the development projections analyzed in the EIR for the project site. The project also was designed to be consistent with the development standards in the general plan and the zoning code. No further environmental assessment was required. Traffic analysis will be required for any use that meets the thresholds in the city's guidelines for preparation of what's called transportation impact reports. The next statement was made, stated the council approved the 502,000-square-foot Redwood at 101 project with zero environmental impact review of any kind, and made outright false statements that the project had been included in the 2035 EIR. So our response to that is a new EIR was not required because they were building to the existing zoning, which was analyzed in the 2035 general plan EIR. And traffic studies will, will be required as new uses come in. The third statement that was made by the member of the public states that the city defended and continues to use a consultant who looked for ways to exclude public comment during the Half Million Square Foot Shoe Palace project. Our response, this is a false statement that has been clarified numerous times. The project went through CEQA, in which the public had an opportunity to comment. The consultant gave options on how to conduct CEQA and never suggested a process without public comment. The city provides more notice and opportunities for public comment than required by the government code. The third statement that was made by the member of the public is that the city can't point to a single project that was rejected or substantially altered due to environmental review. The environment, and here's our response, the environmental and/or planning review for all project applications occurs prior to them coming to the council. Significant changes have occurred to projects due to environmental review. This is done prior to council review. This also includes applicants selecting an alternative project or reducing the scope of the project to mitigate potential impacts. In addition, the city works with applicants and has rejected projects that do not meet the city's goals and design guidelines. We note that all discretionary project approvals require CEQA. However, not all projects require an EIR to pass environmental review. The fourth statement made by the member of the public is that the city has routinely gifted residential developers general plan and zoning amendments for market rate housing projects. Our response, the general plan and zoning amendment process is not a gift. It is a development tool that requires findings for either an approval or denial. The government code provides for a right for developers to apply for either general plan or zoning amendments. Property owners, developers have the right to develop their properties consistent with the city's general plan. Not allowing development could be considered a taking of private property, creating unnecessary legal and financial risk for the city. And the last statement that was made by the member of the public is that the city approves projects based on reasonably foreseeable assumptions made in the 2035 general plan EIR while ignoring the identified infrastructure needed to support those projects. And our city's response is, yes, the city approves project, projects based on reasonably foreseeable assumptions and in the 2035 general plan EIR as required. The identified infrastructure comes with those projects and is included in our capital improvement budget. So I've just summarized the six points, stated first the statement that was made and then our response to each of those six points. And I guess I'll just wrap up with a statement that we talked about this at the goal-setting session, but integrity and following our ethics policy is extremely important and underlies everything we do. And I just want to state that I state exception to the fact, to the statement that we make up facts, we make up information. And I want you to know on behalf of all of my teammates, leadership team, all the way down, that we have nothing but credible work, and we stand behind the work that we do. We are professionals. And, you know, we, I'll just share, we were in the DEI training today, and, you know, it's all about trust. And not only the trust that we provide in our environment, in our workplace, but it's also about the community and the community, you know, having a mutual respect and trustworthiness with each other. And so I just have to state that on behalf of my teammates, I want you to know that the statements that we make are truthful, and we do not make up statements. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
You're good. Thank you, Christina. I appreciate that. Now, any questions by the council? If there are none?
I'll take the next one.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Martinez Beltran, I missed you.
Are we just doing questions at this point?
We are just going to do questions at this point, yep. And if there are no questions, guide me through it. We'll go then to-
Mayor, because this is a, this is a consent item.
Yep.
It doesn't follow the normal hearing procedures.
Right.
You, you know, if council members have questions, they can ask them. But you're welcome to go straight to a motion.
Okay. I'll accept a motion. I approve item number seven.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Borzioli.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lebers. All in favor? Aye.
Any opposed?
None. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number eight.
Doug Muirhead.
Good evening, council members, city staff, residents. For the record, my name is Doug Muirhead. I live in Morgan Hill. I do not intend to say much about this item itself, although it contains important information about how the city makes rational decisions on maintaining our roadways. Of course, you may remember my asking each of you what your goal setting, whether you consider council meetings to be just for conducting your business and to be a public forum to inform and even engage with our residents. But this item is on consent, says to me that you have chosen to consider these meetings to be primarily for conducting your business rather than to engage with us. Someone who is not a civil engineer or a traffic engineer may wonder why Dunn and Tennant are constantly repaved and will, while a railroad avenue in East Middle wait years to be rehabilitated. As I hope you know, bad roads are considered a hidden tax on vehicle operators. Hundreds of dollars are spent by drivers to repair damage caused by bad roads. While others have accidents or are even injured trying to avoid tire-destroying potholes and other road hazards. And I only hope that city staff will find some other mechanisms to get this information out into the public realm. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions by the council?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Did you want to?
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I'll yield to you.
Councilmember Borzioli, please go.
Um, I, I also looked at that comment from Mr. Muirhead, and he was pointing to, the city presents a single pavement condition index, the PCI, rather than breaking down ratings for classes, classes of streets, arterial, collector, residential, while actually representing the condition of all street segments as it did in 2016, 2020. So are we not doing something to, to share where these streets are coming from?
Yeah, I'm going to ask our public services director, Chris Keany, to come forward, and he'll share with you what we're doing.
So, thank you, Councilmembers, Chris Keany, Public Service Director. We do a comprehensive pavement study where we analyze the roads every three to four years. We use grant funding to do that study. In the intermediary years, we do some evaluation. We basically put numbers in from the pavement projects we do, and then we, and then the software does a deterioration analysis on everything else that is in exact. This year, we'll be doing the comprehensive pavement study that will have more details on the exact conditions of the arterial streets, the collector streets, and the residential streets, as well as, we do have estimates on every street in the city, and we look at those every year. But we'll have an up-to-date actual review of the pavement done this year. So that's why the 2016 and 2020 that Mr. Muirhead showed had the much more graphic and details and a more comprehensive look. And that's why that happens in intervals. It doesn't happen every year. We could spend city resources to do those comprehensive reports annually, but that would be money out of our pockets instead of waiting for the grant funding to come. But knowing where we're at, it's either the intervals, it gives us the guidance to do the work on a, on an annual basis, and then estimate the improvement of the overall PCI.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Spring, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll ask my, my question first, and I'm a little bit selfish since I'm close to where I live. But Mr. Keany, I mentioned it to you a couple of years back, and probably every year since then. Yaugus Road between Old Monterey and Hale, that's probably one of the worst pieces of roads we have in this town. And we, I think you tried to patch it up a bit, but ever since the winter time, it's back to one of the worst roads in this city. I don't think we can wait two years for, for fixing that road. And I'm talking just about that piece, only not all of Yaugus Road.
Yeah, and we can look in the next year, and the same thing we did this year with Middle Avenue, and made an adjustment on Middle Avenue, because even though it's not used very often, it was, it's become kind of so unstable that it could cause issues. So we can review that, and we can, we will continue to look at that.
Yeah, so if I drive it with my Honda, my Ford Edge, it's not too bad, even though you kind of drive like a drunken driver to prevent the holes. But if you try to drive it with our Honda Fit, it is everything but pleasant anywhere. It's actually getting dangerous, I think. And in, in the interest of our residents in that area using that road, we need to do something soon.
Yeah, yeah, we will look at that. And we do have other roads within the city. What we've, what we've tried to do over the last six years, and we're one of the limited number of cities that's had a considerable increase and improvement in our overall PCI. And I think, and we keep climbing the charts in the Bay Area because of the good investments the council's made. And our strategy is we try and group the areas as tight as we can. So we do have a plan for that section of Yaugus, as well as Yaugus all the way through the back. But if we have to do something sooner, we can look at that, and we'll keep, we will monitor that. So understood.
Yeah, thank you. And the other one, you know, the state of our roads, right? Impacts the neighborhoods everyone lives in. The pothole issues are a big issue for residents, as we all know, and for all of us. I do think, to follow up with Mr. Muirhead said, it might not be a bad idea of having a workshop sometime, half an hour, 45 minutes or so, just to, to, to show what you're planning to do and which areas and what the impacts will be by when, so that those neighbors all know, A, something is coming, something good is coming. Or B, you know, while something good is coming, I'm also going to be impacted, right?
Right.
And I, and I do think that that warrants some of the time for you and your staff to present that to a wider audience and not just to us five here.
And I think we can definitely do that. And I think after we have the updated study, that would be the perfect time to present that to the community as well as the council.
Yeah, thank you. Just go right ahead.
I reviewed all the streets that were listed on the projects, and I have a couple of questions. Have you informed the Jackson Meadows area that they're being deferred to another year?
We, we have not specifically through this. I don't know that we've had, I, we've had specific conversations on, on the streets. And we, we don't, we don't typically promise because we don't know how long, how much, how far the funding is going to go. So we haven't specifically reached out to them. We did a, some, like, within the last five years, we did a half of Jackson Meadows, so some of it was improved.
All right, well, if anyone's looking at this, they might say, well, gee, why are they pushing us off another year or two? It's actually, I think, two more years before they'll be, so it's just something to think about. And then my second question, I'm reviewing all the streets. I saw one property on Brega Court or Brega Lane, just one property, not a whole street. Just, they have a huge hole in front of their house or something? Yeah, I was just kind of confused because-
I'd, I'm not familiar with it, but if there's a huge hole, we can, we can fix that.
No, I mean, I was just, it wasn't like you listed, you know, from here to here. It was just one property address. And so-
I think it would be a major just repair in that area versus a, a street.
Okay, so you, okay, you counted that as, yeah, that was, I'll take a drive over there. But, you know, I'd be interested to, you know, all the rest were from here to here and from there to there. And then you had a property, and I was like, well, okay, well, what's up with that?
And we will have areas like that, one that we would do just, you know, spot repair on. And some of them would be an example that we're looking at. It won't be more than the street, but it'll be, small area is on, like, east central. And it's like, only like 10 feet from the intersection down that way that there's a problem. So there are some small areas.
Though, and this wasn't, it just gave an address.
We could look at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just have a question. I just want to make sure I understand that what you're saying is about every, every two to four years, there's a more detailed assessment of the streets, and I hear that right?
Yeah, we used to have funding every two years, and it went to three years, and now it's four years. It's distributed by the MTC to the, to the individual municipalities to fund the comprehensive review. So we don't have to fund it ourselves.
Okay, so where the particular report that Mr. Muirfield mentioned will be occurring in 2024? Is that-
It should be occurring this year in 2023.
Got it. Okay. Very good. If they look for the questions, that entertain a motion to-
Actually, Mayor, there's, there's no, there's no action on this item.
No action. Well, very good. We'll move- Action. Well, very good. We'll move on. Thank you. Uh, we then move to other business. Item number nine, approved leadership Morgan Hill renovation and art project at the stage picnic.
Set up here. Connect to the H C mic here, right?
Oh, we have it right here.
Oh, okay, that works for me. Have, um.
You know, you can use the clicker or the, um.
That'll work for me. Thank you. Set up here. Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, council members, uh, for having us on your agenda. Oh, right. Thank you. Um, let me just move my notes so I can see them. Uh, thank you for having us on your agenda tonight. Uh, my name is Jeff Schumacher, and I am proud to be here to represent the Leadership Morgan Hill class of twenty twenty three as we seek approval for our, our approval for our class project from this council. Um, and about our project, uh, the uh, core of it is about renovating the stage barbecue area at Community Park. Uh, it's a, a gazebo that um, is adjacent to the Magical Bridge Playground in Community Park. And uh, we want to uh, install a mural there that will reflect the themes of community and inclusion. Uh, inclusion being uh, one of the primary themes of the Magical Bridge Park that this uh, structure is adjacent to. Um, just getting into a little bit into the details of the scope of the project. Uh, firstly, we'd be uh, cleaning and doing prep work for the painting around the buildings, uh, painting the building's base color on, on all the walls. Uh, finally, once that's in, we'll uh, work on painting the primary mural as well as additional embellishments on some of the other, other walls. Um, then, of course, we'll, we'll be adding an anti graffiti coating to uh, help protect the artwork and reduce uh, future maintenance. Um, as needed. Uh, and then the uh, next thing we'll be doing is adding a plaque to kind of acknowledge uh, people who've made the project possible. Um, and finally, uh, we'll clean up uh, some of the surrounding area, the flooring, um, the waste bins, and also uh, refurbishing the, the tables by sanding and, and repainting them, in a little bit of a worn down shape. Um, currently. Uh, so, of course, as part of this, we'll need an artist uh, to uh, help design and implement the mural. And uh, we are fortunate enough to be working with uh, Lena Velazquez, who uh, is a longtime Morgan Hill resident and local volunteer, and has made any, many other contributions to Morgan Hill through her artwork, including uh, on all pop-up parks, utility boxes, and uh, relevant to this project, also in the Magical Bridge Playground, um, that uh, we're hoping to have kind of a cohesive artistic theme with. Um, we had a selection process that we went through, uh, where we looked at, um, you know, experience, budget, ties to the communities, um, and ultimately, um, uh, chose to work with uh, Lena Velazquez for this. Um, without our, our budget, uh, we're, um, our cap for our project is uh, ten thousand dollars, um, of which uh, we've uh, signed seventy five hundred for the mural and artist fees, et cetera. Seven hundred for uh, marketing and community events, um, which I'll talk about a little bit in a later slide. Another five hundred dollars for um, any additional expenses related to fundraising and also for the plaque. Uh, and the remaining fifteen hundred dollars we'll be keeping as a contingency, um, to make sure everything can go smoothly if anything needs a little bit more money. Um, apparently, the funding will be coming from fundraising by um, my fellow uh, Leadership Morgan Hill Class Twenty Twenty Three classmates, uh, as well as any in-kind contributions we're able to get from local businesses to help offset some of the catch requirements. Uh, now, next up, we can, um, oh, this is slightly, slightly different version of the slides, but that's fine. Um, so this is, this is the before shot of uh, one of the, the kind of main shaded wall, uh, neck near the uh, um, near the tables that um, we want to put the mural up on. Uh, and as you see, it's, it's produced some love. Um, and uh, this next, um, this next slide shows, um, we, we put, we got some concept art from the artist and uh, put it onto this picture to kind of give you a sense of roughly, you know, again, this is concept art, but um, roughly, uh, what we're kind of thinking, kind of cleaned up the tables a little bit here. Um, and uh, you know, so we're, we're looking to um, include a, a, a um, tree on the front. Um, let me skip ahead a little bit because I moved these slides around just a little bit. Um, so talking about the tree a little bit, uh, are, um, the, the theme that we kind of want with this, this um, artwork is that uh, trees uh, represents, um, can represent, as a, are there are statements here, says, uh, trees can represent community and inclusion, uh, because trees are for all people. Everybody can enjoy the shade and beauty of trees, and indeed, trees themselves are communities unto themselves. They have the, the birds and the animals that they support. Um, as well, this, this space um, is used for a lot of different events. And the tree concept is a fairly neutral, um, you know, kind of uh, symbol. Uh, it, it uh, can encapsulate both, um, uh, you know, earth and, um, you know, beginnings and ends of, of life, and also the, the branching structure of the trees can represent the many paths that one takes uh, through life. Um, that kind of works well with the diverse use cases of the space for both, uh, you know, birthdays, family gatherings, but also memorials and, and other events. Um, so we'll be, uh, there's a few more, here's a few more shots, actually. Um, this is another kind of before and aftershock, maybe gives a little more context about the building if you're less familiar with it, but this is a bit of a wider shot. And then here's a shot of the, um, some of the, the sides of the building. Um, and you'll see there's actually, um, this is, this is our concept art, but this also shows a slightly closer picture of some existing artwork that's in near the space. Nina Velazquez, our, our artist, actually made this art that's on this community box as well. Um, so we're trying to have a, a theme that fits kind of holistically with the existing artwork. Uh, and I guess that this is a bit different from the version I've got, that's fine. Um, so we'll also be doing a little bit of, um, of marketing to draw public attention to the project. Uh, we'll um, invite local youth to meet and greet the artist, um, and see some of the process of how the mural is made. Uh, that will host in multiple languages to show that uh, uh, more of the community can participate. And then finally, after the mural is complete, uh, we'd like to host a community celebration that could provide an opportunity to maybe promote other art programs in Morgan Hill, uh, as well. Um, where we're at with the project so far, um, in uh, in March, we gained, we presented and gained approval from the Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we presented to the Library Culture and Arts Commission, gained approval there. Of course, today, we're hoping to um, gain approval from you all that come for the project as a whole. Uh, and hopefully start on May twentieth, uh, actually start um, on the art with an estimated completion date of around August nineteenth. Then sometime in August or September, uh, we'll host that uh, unveiling and community uh, event that I, that I mentioned. Um, and uh, so ultimately, um, that's, that's what we're, we're here for today is to get approval for the project. And um, thank you once again for your attention to this proposal. Uh, and uh, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you for that, uh, report, that presentation.
Mayor, if I could just, yes, a couple of comments. So just to summarize the item, Chris Giani, Public Services Director again, thank you for the presentation. Um, so two actions for the council to look at tonight. The first action is approving the project. The sec, the second action relates to artwork. The Library Culture and Arts Commission uh, recommended delegating authority to the leadership class and subcommittee of the commission to select the final artwork. Um, and that recommendation was based on a request from the leadership class, um, based on timing of the project and um, and, and their desire to get the final artwork. However, the, the council can um, go with the, the uh, recommendation of the commission, or the council could approve the project and still request that the final artwork be reviewed by the council and commission as standard. That's an alternative as well. But the recommendation from the Library Committee Cultural Arts Commission is to delegate that authority. So just wanted to make sure those two actions were understood by the council.
Very good. Yes, thank you. Uh, why don't you introduce your classmates? Have them stand.
You have a whole front row here.
Okay, very good.
This is a, this is my fellow classmates. That's also my wife, um, who is also part of the class.
Oh, very good.
Um, and uh,
Okay.
I can introduce them individually if you'd like.
It's, that's fine. Just want to make sure they were recognized. Thank you all for being here and uh, thank you for your presentation. Do you have any questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, well, well, fir- first of all, the, as a leadership Morgan Hill alumni, and actually, there's three of us. Uh, my colleague Marilyn and uh, our city clerk, uh, we've all been in the same class in twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twelve. Uh, so, so uh, as ever, uh, uh, so, so we, we know what you're going through. We know what you're talking about. Uh, but, but I, I always use, use the couple of minutes I have also to, to raise the bar for Leadership Morgan Hill's class. Uh, one is, is you know, right next, we have the Magical Bridge Playground. Uh, and, and I, I wonder why you capped the budget at the ten thousand when you could maybe raise twenty, thirty thousand and then donate the twenty thousand you don't need to maintain the park next door, for example. Is that a discussion you had at the class?
So I, I do know that at, at our class, so that's something that's kind of set by the Leadership Morgan Hill Board, as far as I understand. Um, they set a cap, uh, I, I don't know a hundred percent of the reasons, but um, I understood it might have been somewhat uh, to avoid kind of classes competing with just trying to gain the most money and not necessarily, um, you know, to contribute a, a, a full project. Um, but that's, uh, yes, we, we're limited, our class is limited to ten thousand, um, by the, by the board.
Yeah, so I'm not, not going to question the board. I, I was on the board and is president at the time. Uh, the class always can ask for more and do more. Uh, so, so uh, don't just do what you've been told, uh, challenge your own board. Uh, with regards, with regards to, to what, what do you show now? Are those just samples? Or is this the, the direction you're heading down?
So uh, my understanding is that directionally, it's, it's where the artist wants to go with this, obviously, concept art and mockups. Um, but I know, uh, my understanding is that thematically, as a, you know, having a tree and having kind of a natural, naturalistic, um, uh, embellishments on the other walls to fit thematically with the existing artwork. As far as I understand, that's, that's the um, direction that the, the artist and um, uh, the team members that are kind of interfacing with the, the Library Culture and Arts Commission are looking to go towards.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only question. I'll have some comments later on, but.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions? Councilmember Borzioli.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And so I'm also an alumni, uh, two thousand and three, four. And according to what I hear is that class was the best class, but anyway, um. So, uh, you, you showed a picture of the tree, and you had another picture in there with butterflies, the mountains, the poppies. And you didn't give any reasoning for not going that way. It sounds like you want to just go with the tree. But if you look at that picture, you want to, if you want to bring it up, uh, your inclusion and, and the community, uh, when you reference it, uh, to the tree, uh, no, the one with the butterfly and the poppies and the mountain.
Uh, on, in this, in this presentation or in the, in the previous slides of the Library Culture and Arts Committee, or? Coming?
That one, right there. Do you know that one?
No, uh, you had it on the, on the back wall. Uh, the mountain, at least the, the packet that I got had.
Oh, right.
It had many choices that were shown to us, yeah.
Other, yeah, right.
Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming you, you sent that to, um, you sent that to us. So you don't know which picture I'm talking about? So if you look at the back wall where the, where the tree is. Okay, you also have another picture, you can see which had, um, do you have it there?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so these were different, uh, different concepts that we were, that we were looking, uh, looking at. Um, I, I think since then, uh, the artist has, um, kind of coalesced around the, the, the trees theme. As far as I understand, this is sort of a. Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, so those were some, those were some previous mockups that, um, that we had made. Actually, those, I don't even think that particular one came from the artist that, uh, we've selected to, to go forward with. Um, actually, I think the one that you're referring to might have been one that I just mocked at myself with, with a couple of, um, pictures I found online. So that, that one wasn't even a, um, uh, I guess a, a proper proposal, so much as it was just sort of like conceptually that. Previously, when we were trying to figure out the artwork, where we wanted to get a couple of, um, pieces of concept art to, to visualize it, but um, that's not the direction I, I think that, um, we've ended up going with.
So you discounted that picture with the butterflies and the poppy field and the mountain. But, but why? Because all the things you, you touted about the tree applies to that picture also. And to be quite honest, that, that picture is, uh, really pops out and displays the mountains of Morgan Hill, uh, where I understand your, um, your, your tree concept, but, um, um, I, I, I think, I think you should possibly reconsider because, um, for me, that tree doesn't do anything. So, but, um, so that, uh, so you didn't consider that at all. You just said you want to go with the tree, and that's, that was it.
For the most part, we're at least, uh, kind of leaning on the artist's recommendation, um, and having, she's had, I guess, a lot of, uh, uh, you know, experience both in that particular area of town, but also, um, well, with, uh, adding arts, uh, around town. Um, so we're kind of deferring to her expertise for that for the most part. Um, but I, uh, I do hear your point that it's, um, uh, those themes, a lot of these mockups can kind of be applied to those, um, those themes. Uh, and I, I think that's something we can take back to the artists and, um, you know, share that with, with, with her.
If you can, I just would appreciate, and then, uh, then, uh, I, I'm opposed to you not coming back and presenting the final. So I would rather see you come back and present the final to, to us for, um, any deliberations. I'm not trying to say you don't have the final say. Uh, we did this with the, uh, last year's class too. Uh, they, they had to come back, um.
Do you know, I'm, I'm sorry, councilmember, just my, my, this is, I think this is questions. You don't want to necessarily state your position.
Got it. So that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may just jump in super quickly in case people are wondering, you know, what, you know, about the other rendering. So just from a purely logistical administrative standpoint, so under item number nine, what's being referenced by the council member is the second attachment, the Leadership Morgan Hill Project Proposal. And so that came in prior to actual staff report and presentation, and so you've seen evolution in, in what's being presented. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Beliebers.
So did your class actually vote on this picture that you chose? The classmates, you know, or did you just accept what she presented?
Uh, it's on your side, yeah. Don heads up the subteam that's been mostly ruling.
Yeah, um, what we have done is we have selected the artist that we'd like to work with.
Okay.
The artwork that Juno is referring to was a proposal by a different artist that we have not gone to. That's why Christina was able to pull it up. It was part of the selection process.
Okay.
We have not finalized the artwork. That remains to be done with the artist and the subcommittee from LCAC. So there will be oversight in addition, of course, to our input.
Okay.
Last of twenty twenty three.
I have a question for, uh, Chris Giani. Um, did Parks and Rec and Library Arts Commission, you know, chime in on this?
Yeah, so the Parks and Rec Commission didn't chime in on the artwork. They, uh, recommended approval of the project.
Okay.
Uh, the Library Cultural Arts Commission, um, they did not see the updated artwork sketches. They saw the original ones because they saw it before, uh, the, yeah, the artist selection was going because leadership is moving simultaneous to get their project done. At the same time, we're going through this review process. So the commission, um, did not see the final artwork, but I believe has been working, um, with the leadership class, their subcommittee, um, on developing that artwork with the artist selected by the leadership class. And that's why it's kind of moving in this path at the same time along, they're trying to complete the project at the same time we're doing it.
Thank you. Okay, so one more question for the, the leadership group. Can you, uh, direct the artist in a little bit different way based on some of the feedback that you've heard from the council today?
My colleagues just reminded me, no, excuse me, uh, LCAC did approve this artwork.
Okay.
The tree concept.
Good, yeah. Okay.
The, 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 to be clear, the LCAC doesn't approve the artwork. They recommend approval to the council. So a council approves artwork or delegates the authority.
Now, back to my question. Now, back to my question. Can you go back to the artist with suggestions that you've heard tonight? Perhaps we're not loving this as much as we're loving some of the others. So and have her maybe add in some of the things that we thought were a little more uplifting. The tree's kind of scary looking. Okay, thank you.
You.
Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Thank you for your report and and thanks to Leadership Morgan Hill for all the great things you've given us. As part of the funds and the funding cap, I'm wondering is there any way also to maybe take the cap up? But I'm thinking about maintenance. Is there a plan for maintenance of the mural or who will update that or if it gets graffitied over or how does that work?
So my understanding of that is that part of, I think the approval here would be for the city to take ownership of the project after after we're completed. And that would includes, you know, future.
The city would maintain it.
We typically, the the leadership class will expand. Most of our mural projects that are provided to the city. The city requires, and I know the artists in the class is very familiar with the clear coat graffiti coating, which has protected all of our murals in the past. So then basically, we're getting a fully repainted gazebo with artwork on it. It's graffitied. The maintenance staff would do the graffiti removal. And that's what's happened at all the other mural locations that we'd have graffiti on.
Another point that might make the council member feel more at ease, the artist Lena had part of her bid and her agreement with us is that she will maintain the artwork for five years.
Okay.
After. Okay, so she'll go back. I mean, as Chris said, the graffiti coating and all that should preserve it well. But if it needs to be updated, you know, retouched, she'll do that.
And Lena has done that on other artwork she has within the city, even without a agreement. She's done that.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, that's great. And then we do have a policy on this, right? Which where does the policy to state that the artwork comes back to council for review?
It would unless you delegate the authority, then then it should, it would come back to you for final approval if that's what the council wish council wishes.
Okay, and then I also wanted to ask about the timeframe. I know there's a target for September reveal of the mural, but is there something tied to that date?
Yes.
So we, I I I believe there's, well, our class ends sometime around, actually, Don, do you know more about the statement to what I was recently decided?
Our class will be done in October. I think it's like October tenth in that range and and our project needs to be completed. While while we're still
Within the class.
That are, pardon me. Prior to October is what I'm trying to say.
Prior to October. Okay, so there's a little bit of room there. Okay, great. And then I also wanted to ask about again, the the topic of art and being that this is where the magical bridge is and the whole idea of the magical bridge is that it encapsulates kind of all abilities. And so I guess my question was, did you talk about having artwork that talks? Maybe references being open to all abilities?
I don't know that we did specifically all abilities. I mean, we did it across culture. We're we're trying to make it.
That is fantastic. I love that. Thank you.
At all abilities, I don't recall unless some of my classmates do. There you go. So, yeah. They feel as how we did.
Okay, so I would just, you know, I think looking at the magical bridges for kids in wheelchairs and all different abilities physically, I think that might be another thing that I would offer along with what my colleagues have shared.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yep, no worries, Sarah.
Thank you. I have no questions, but we will now go to the public for any questions. We have anybody wishing to speak?
Brian Sullivan.
Hi, thank you. I'm leadership class of twenty twenty two. And normally, projects are finished prior to graduation ceremony. And so this one, I'm sure will be finished before. Unfortunately, ours still isn't finished and Chris is looking at me right now. The city manager went through the class with me. She was also one of the members of the class. Normally, the project is finished prior to graduation. However, in some cases, and it's been happened twice, I think, in the history of leadership classes, where the project is extended for other circumstances. Ours was a lot of different circumstances. Getting some of the contractors to do it in a in a good manner and on time, and also the weather affected us quite a bit. The mural on ours also was done by an artist in town here that had done other type of murals for the city. And she was kind enough, in our case, to give us the mural for nothing and actually did that. So we actually have it on both of the gateway signs coming into town. Our project is still ongoing. The last thing we have to do are two things. One, I talked to Chris about it tonight. Is we're going to do some landscaping on the north side in the next couple of Saturdays. Hopefully, we're going to schedule that, get that done. And then also, we're trying to get solar lighting put on both of the signs. The the issue with the solar lighting is two issues. One, we want to make sure that it's on there so nobody can actually take it, remove it or ruin it. And second, the have enough solar so that the light will be lit from dawn to dusk and on both signs. So leadership is a great organization and anybody hasn't gone through it, any of the council members haven't gone through it, I would recommend it for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments, questions by the public?
No, ma'am.
Okay, now back to discussion. This is a fifteen minute timeframe here that we will now discuss. And I've got a couple of comments before I call on any other council member. Or just subjective. And so what we might say up here, we don't like, others might might actually really like. I think the fact that the tree itself was a preliminary piece of art may not be specifically what the that the artist is going to provide as a final product. My concern about having the art come back, and I get it, that's a policy, but we can also delegate authority to LCAC. And I think because we do have these committees and commissions in place, we should certainly allow them to do their jobs at a higher level. And because of the fact that the, again, when you we're asking the artist or we're asking Leadership Morgan Hill to engage with an artist to provide what they believe is the piece of art that really speaks to the community. Again, we can have all forty six thousand community members walk by and go, doesn't speak to me that way. But we we do have to understand an artist's objective. And then again, I get into the concern of how many times do we ask these folks to come back and make a presentation to us because we didn't like that version? Can you get a tree with more leaves? Can you have some rocks? I mean, we could just go on and on. And I think what we've got to look at here is there's a timeframe that the leadership class is up against. And so I I just would ask that we would have that consideration. So I'll open that up again for any other comments or discussion. The councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm really excited about this project and I think that I've been to that area and so I think it definitely needs some love, as he so gently put it. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve Leadership Morgan Hill Class of twenty twenty three project for the renovation installation of artwork at the stage picnic area of Community Park. Although I would like to see that come back to council, being that this is for all of the community. I'm sure you can go back and I'm sure you'll discuss all the things that you've heard here, but I would like to see it come back for a final review.
And so so to clarify the motion, it's to to approve the first recommendation and not approve the second recommendation.
Correct.
Are there any other any other discussions? Well, okay, second, you got a second with councilmember Levers?
I wanted to sorry, I wanted to make a motion by substitution. And that is to incorporate some of councilmember Levers' comments relative to having the discussion with the artist about some of the concerns that we had about the the tree. And 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 I I I don't want it to come back and and have another discussion. I what what I'm saying is put that on the table and let them figure it out.
Yeah.
Incorporate what we've discussed.
Leadership at Morgan Hill to have the discussion with the artist, correct?
Right, yes, yeah.
So you're, that's a friendly amendment or you're asking for an amendment to a motion?
Yes.
Clarify, was that being offered as a friendly amendment? Or you you said substitute motion, motion?
We could do a friendly amendment if you're acceptable to that.
Yeah, I'm happy for them to have the discussion. I just, I'm asking for it to come back to council once.
Yeah, I think you're in agreement with that. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I will still second that.
Okay, all in favor? Hold on, I'd like, wait, I'm sorry, please.
Thank you. If you look the, well, first of all, I I congratulation leadership Morgan Hill Class of twenty twenty three. You picked a great project. I I fully support that. You also picked a great artist, well known in our community. I I do like the idea and again, I'm not asked, I'm not requesting it, but I I'd like you to listen to me with open mind. Magical Bridge Playground is next to it. Why not maybe incorporating some of the kids, including kids on living on the spectrum to help with the artwork, for example? An artist can easily do that. This artist especially can do that if if she she and the class were willing to to look into I into this. I think that would be a great addition just for the creation of the art itself, right? And then combine the two wonderful projects we have out there. And then maybe also for the class members themselves to maybe maybe volunteer for a week at the park next door. That you don't have to raise money to do that, but you could enhance your project and combine that class project with the park next door, right? And then hopefully, some of you will remain volunteers. That's why I bring it up here. And then, of course, if you can go with fundraising beyond your budget, the park next door will need help to main to be maintained, right? That's why I bring it up. And 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 any funds you could raise now, as you go to seek donors, right? I think donors will be willing to do that if you combine it. I I'm one of, I'm a huge donor to almost every class project. But I I I want something out of my donations and and not just some paint. So so think about that, but I'm I'm totally okay to to delegate the authority. Art is controversial. Me bald when you do art and and do something wonderful that our community will like. And I have ever full confidence in you that you will do so. So so I will support, of course.
I just want the Leadership Morgan Hill Class to know the reason I will not support it is because it doesn't give you the autonomy and ability to do what you're asking. So again, I think it's a great project. I think it's, I think it's wonderful. I'm I'm all into public art. Yes, ma'am.
When you're done, I just want to clarify that I have the motion correct.
Yes, we will do that. And so what I would like, I would have preferred to allow LCAC to do the approval of this process so that we could expedite this and make sure we're not wasting any time. And again, allow artistic creativity to be to be exercised by the artist and by Leadership Morgan Hill.
So if that may, if I may, why don't you propose a substitute motion by substitution? I because I'm, oh, I'm really torn on that.
Oh, you, okay.
I might go with you on that.
Then I will make a substitute motion. I would like to move to allow to approve Leadership Morgan Hill Class of twenty twenty three project and also to delegate final approval of artwork to Leadership Morgan Hill and a subcommittee of the LCAC.
And I'll second that. I I do think just given the timeframe, we have to delegate the authority back to class, which we have done almost for every class project that I remember.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Mayor, does that include both actions, actions one and two?
As you said, the substitution motion is staff's recommendation.
Right. So help me, Don, I'm, no, I'm.
So now you've got a, you've got a new motion in a second. And so the council will vote on the substitute motion, your substitute motion. First time, if that passes, then we're done. And if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't get three votes, then it returns back to the motion that councilmember Martinez.
Very good. Then all in favor, let's let's make.
I have a question for clarification. Okay, the motion that you, Councilman Sir Martinez put forward was not to approve anything when we saw the final design. It was more just to look at it. Is that correct?
Right.
We were not doing any approval.
Well, the way that the motion was framed, it would not include a delegation so that it would have to would have to come back to council for approval.
Okay, good. I'm glad I asked the question then.
So if, Michelle, if you could you read the motion that we are going to vote on first?
So the substitute motion is just approving staff's recommended action.
Very good. All in favor? I'm sorry, do you have a comment?
I do on the substitute.
Please go right ahead.
So I I mean, I think, yes, I think that Leadership Morgan Hill can discuss and I very much value LCAC, but we, I think in all fairness to our community, we do have, when we have art, comes before the council. And so that's why I've said that I think, in all fairness to everybody who's bringing their great recommendations and asking us to put that out in the community, I think that that's the feeling to go about it. So.
I appreciate that. Again, I just I just go back to the fact that I think we have so many varying opinions here based on what we believe art is or should be. That I don't know that, I don't know that when it comes to art, we would necessarily speak on behalf of the entire community. But we would certainly have our opinions and have the right to them. I just think it creates more of a hindrance for the class to get their project done based on the way they see it best and within the timeframe they're looking for. So with that, we will then vote on the substitute motion, which would allow again, Michelle, would you mind reading that one more time?
The substitute motion is approved staff's recommended action.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
I didn't hear your vote? Did you? Did you say aye? Pardon me, forgive me. Okay, so that passes four to one.
Mayor, before you move on, we, the leadership class was hoping that they could get just comments from the council members that they were going to take away to incorporate. Maybe one more time. They they're requesting that if that's possible.
I'm sorry.
Comments that they that I think councilmember Levers.
Now, the, just real quickly, the the motion passed. And so it is now, it is now the authority of Morgan Hill, of Leadership Morgan Hill to do this project.
And what our clerk just mentioned is feel free, we'll have the video posted. You can go back and kind of capture the comments.
Yeah, right, right. So it does not have to come back to the to the to the to the council. All right, very good. Thank you, councilmembers. Next item, any future council initiated agenda items? And may my colleagues have any future council items that they would like to talk about? Or being none, we will adjourn. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Shirley Lo Cicero. Meeting adjourned.